Submitting questions to Dr. Noonan and his team. And we'll review the answers that have been provided by Ms. Michael and her team. Those are all posted publicly on the website on Board Docs for the public to review and follow along. And tonight, what we'll do in similar fashion that we've done in the past is we'll review each of the questions as well as each of the answers provided and have a discussion among the board. So from that, Dr. Noonan, we're going to go ahead and turn this over to you.
Yeah, thank you. So first and foremost, thank you all to, well, thank you to those of you that had submitted some questions for our budget. Currently, I think we're up to budget question number nine. We certainly aren't seeking more questions, but we just wanted to let you know that we will continue to take them and happily answer them for you. We, you know, we want to do this as transparently as we possibly can as we work through it. I do want to take just a second to thank again Michelle Kopic, who is away from the table at the moment, and also, pardon?
Just getting in the door.
Yeah, just getting in the door. And also Kristin Michael, our chief operating officer. Between the two of them and our chief academic officer and myself, we were able to pull these questions together in a pretty quick turnaround time, and hopefully these are helpful to you. In the interest of time, I regret that Kristin won't be reading these from start to finish, but she will be giving you a high-level overview of each of these. So with that, Kristin, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Noonan. John, are we going to pull the budget questions up on the screen? All right, so while he's pulling those up, I'll go right ahead and get started. The first question, number one, was how are the lunch and recess times at Oak Street adjusted? Lunch this year was changed from 20 minutes to 30 minutes. That allowed classroom teachers to have 30 minutes of a duty-free lunch and to supervise recess. And then recess is 15 to 20 minutes twice a day, except for early-release Wednesdays. So that was question number one. Any questions on that? Question number two was regarding the Wednesday childcare subsidy. So what would the amount of a subsidy be if we paid for Wednesday-only care for families instead of having them pay? The top paragraph just walks through the math and the formula in terms of how we did that calculation. And that estimated cost of subsidizing early-release childcare for all of the families currently in the program is $236,574. So any questions on Wednesday childcare?
Yeah, and maybe I need to be more clear with the question. It wasn't, I wasn't looking for the amount for who's currently enrolled. Is that the answer that was given?
That is the answer that's given. It's for all of the families who are currently there. If we were to not charge for Wednesdays, how much would the school system need to pay to subsidize care on Wednesdays?
Okay, I guess I'm more interested in having an anticipated number of children that would be signed up for Wednesdays, and then what would that cost be? Only because I am concerned that, and I understand, Dr. Noonan, and I shouldn't say Dr. Noonan, other people's concern, that it would probably be an unfair situation to pay for care when other families are needing to pay for their own care on Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays. But I think arguably, the, that FCCPS should be responsible for the payment for at least from the hours of 1:15 until 3:50. And then, you know, so maybe some sort of cost-sharing situation with families, and the families being responsible from 3:50 to 6:30, because arguably, children are generally in school on Wednesdays, you know, from 1:15 to 3:50. So I was more looking to see what that cost would be just on Wednesdays for the children that would be enrolled in the Wednesday only.
Thank you so much for that clarification. We'll enter that as another budget question.
Can I ask that we get consensus of the board before we move forward with that question? Because I, I don't know, I don't, I don't quite understand why we would subsidize for some Wednesday-only kids and not for the other parents who also pay for Wednesdays. So I'm just trying to understand that.
Sure, I, I guess that, you know, maybe everybody should be subsidized from 1:15 to 3:50 on Wednesdays.
Okay, we can, we can cost that out.
Okay.
And that would be roughly half of the cost that's in here, just in round numbers. So you'd be looking, if we, if we split the cost on Wednesdays between families and the school division, it would be in the neighborhood of $117,000 or so.
Okay.
$118,000. We just, we didn't answer the Wednesday-only kids, because I didn't think the board would be, I didn't think there'd be consensus of the board to subsidize just for Wednesday-only kids and not for everybody.
Sure, no, and I understand that. And arguably, I, you know, maybe we should be looking at subsidizing all Wednesday care from 1:15 to 3:50.
Okay. So would you, can, can we just get a feel from the board? Does everybody want us to do that calculus? I just am curious before we move ahead, because that seems like a, like a lot based on what we've shared. And I'm not pushing back, I just want to know, that's all.
Can I ask a question? Suppose it were, like, free, I don't know, you know? Would you advocate for, like, a policy within the structure of the, of the ACT School Program, or that were the ACT School Program to provide, like, you know, a subsidized childcare for that period? Like, as kind of like a, I mean, like, because I think it's, there's two things. One is the money, the other one is directing, that that's the way it'd be structured and spent. And so would you be advocating for that? Suppose it were, I mean, suppose the researchers were there?
Let me just make sure I understand your question. Making, advocating that we have a policy that implemented this certain way? Is that what you're?
That's right, yeah, like, so, I mean, I think getting the numbers is fine, it appears to me, but I think it's a much longer discussion if we want to make that choice regarding providing such a subsidy.
You know, I think that would be a great thing to have in a policy. Right now, I, you know, I, if, if the board were in favor of that, you know, I, I just would like to, I, I understand that each Wednesday might not be that extreme of an expense for families, but when it adds up over the course of the year, and when you have multiple children within the aftercare program, just for the Wednesday only, it would still come out to over $1,000 per kid. So I would like to see if we could get that cost reduced some way, if that's through policy or another means. I'm happy to explore those.
Yeah, I don't know if it needs to be a policy, but obviously, because it has to do with reallocating budget, it would be something the board would need to.
Right.
Engage in.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, speaking personally regarding Dr. Noonan's question, I think figuring out how much that will cost is something that makes sense. I think having more information than not is always a good thing. I, just reacting right now, am not sure how I would fall on whether or not to do such a thing. I'd have to think about it some more. So, but that's just me speaking for myself, so I don't know if any other board members want to.
Others on the board?
Vice Chair Tice?
Yeah, I, I guess I don't, in this moment, understand the, or don't at least agree with the philosophy of it being our obligation to provide childcare. I think that that's a slippery slope. Then we would be getting into teacher workdays, are we obligated to provide childcare for teacher workdays, and how many days of the summer? And I think it's just, it's just part of the institution of public education that there are times when, as we went through the long discussion, when we, when we came up with the policy for early-release Wednesdays, that there are times that teachers and staff need the kids to not, students to not be in the building. And however we, however we schedule that, it's just, I understand it's a burden on the families, but it's also a benefit to the students and staff that I just think comes with, comes with public education, personally.
So I, I think, at this point, I'm probably not prepared to really speak, have an opinion yet on whether or not I think that would be feasible. But one concern I would have is whether this would lead to us needing to, or the, you know, the providers to implement a cap, and that fewer children would be able to benefit from the care.
Yes, Dr. Noonan? Just, just, so it doesn't sound like there's objection to getting more information. More information seems to be fine. But I want to make sure I get your question just right. So you're asking us to cost what it would be to subsidize for all kids on Wednesday for two hours, essentially?
Yeah, that'd be correct.
Okay, okay, we can do that.
I appreciate that, thank you.
And then you all can make the conversation, you can have the conversation about whether or not you want to change the, the funding from where it would come from and the like, and then whether or not you want to change the, or set a policy relative to subsidizing Wednesdays.
Yeah, it sounds like the idea of funding early-release Wednesdays to the manner that Ms. Silverman described would require just a board discussion, so we can look at slotting an agenda topic for us to discuss that as a board, so we can all react to it. Does that sound, Ms. Silverman, does that sound feasible for you?
Yeah, I don't know if it needs to be a separate session, if it's part of the budget process.
In terms of the process of, do we want as a board to push for early-release Wednesdays to be funded at the, the manner that you discussed? You're thinking that that does not, you don't need that to be a separate discussion?
Um, yeah, sure, we can have it as a separate discussion. I, I just don't want this to be separated out from a budget discussion.
Okay, okay, that makes sense. When we, when we respond to this in the budget question, and we bring it forward at the next budget work session, it might be a good time to sort of, at that point, you know, you're getting to a place where you're going to have to adopt your advertised budget. And if your advertised budget is going to include a subsidy for Wednesdays, you're going to need to have that conversation probably sooner rather than later. So I don't know that there's going to be an opportunity to have a whole lot more conversation, like slotting it for a work session in a month or two. So I might suggest you would consider anyway, having that at the next budget work.
So for the, so just to say, so for the question, you're going to do a follow-up question to Ms. Silverman, and then during that answer, as a board, we can use that time to talk about the overall proposal of having an early-release Wednesday funded at different levels?
I think it would be important to know whether you want to have that in this budget or not, because when you adopt your advertised budget.
True.
We want it to reflect what your values are.
Okay, so as a board, we'll be ready in two weeks' time to talk about this in response to the question that Ms. Silverman, this follow-up question that Ms. Silverman proposed. Okay? Any other questions or comments about that from the board? Or Ms. Michael, any?
The next question was related to extra pay for extra duty stipends. We inadvertently left these out of the budget book, so the following two pages provide the extra pay for extra duty stipends. They're organized on the first page by activities and athletics, and on the second page by school-based stipends, and we will add these to the online version of the budget, so people can access them right after page 295.
And these costs reflect the cost-of-living adjustment that would be made as well?
Yes, and that will be a future question coming up in this set. The next question, question number four, is about our reading specialist. So currently, in our proposed budget, the reading specialist was not funded first primarily all of the positions that we added in the FY25 proposed budget, were continuations of positions that were previously funded with one-time money. And then the second item that factored into the consideration of the reading specialist is that we're currently staffed above the state recommended standards of quality, which is one reading teacher for every 550 students. And we currently have one and a half reading teachers at both Mount Daniel and Oak Street, and that projected enrollment for next year is 520 and 578.
Ms. Tice, Vice Chair Tice?
Thank you, this was my question. I just had a couple of follow-up questions. What would the ballpark cost be of, of the specialist?
Sure, about $104,000.
Okay. And with the new, was the request, the request was just for Mount Daniel, so Oak Street would stay at 1.5, and the request would be that Mount Daniel would have 2.5? Is that?
That isn't.
We probably wouldn't do it that way. Actually, we'd probably make them full positions at, if we were to do it, we would make them full positions. However, when we look at the needs based on the Tier III instruction in the fall and the winter, and the numbers of kids that need intervention, we probably would recommend, if, if we were to move forward with this, with this, to not hire a reading specialist for Mount Daniel, but instead hire a reading interventionist, someone who provides a little bit more in, in, push in and pull out with kids as opposed to professional development with teachers. Right now, at Mount Daniel, Phyllis Kravinsky is there as a 1.0 reading teacher and then, and reading specialist, and then Katie Reardon's the 0.5. And we also have a 0.5 reading interventionist. We would, we would want to make that 0.5 a full position, and then move Katie Reardon over to Oak Street full-time, and probably add some time to the reading specialist.
Okay, so it would be more like collectively, like a 2.0 at each school?
Yeah.
Okay, and is the?
Well, it's 2.0 right now at Mount Daniel.
Okay.
Because Tim Kasich currently uses some of his part-time hourly money to pay for a halftime reading interventionist. So what we would do is eliminate that, so yes, we would eliminate that hourly money and put it into a position and create a 1.0 reading interventionist, and then move Katie Reardon, the reading specialist, to Oak Street full-time, instead of splitting her time.
Got it, so it would be, it would still be roughly two full.
Yeah.
Positions. And then is the, the changes with the VLA, the Virginia Literacy Act, does that impact the, both the schools? Is that, is that a?
It does. It impacts both schools.
K-5 initiative?
It does. What it also impacts ironically is that the standards of quality for reading teachers is actually going up, even though they're instituting at the state level a new Virginia Literacy Initiative. Right now, it's K-3, and then 4.6 or 4.5 is a 1.0, and now they're looking at K-5 or K-6, depending on how you're configured as a 1.0. So it would reduce the number of required reading teachers with the new Virginia Literacy Act, based on the standards of quality.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Dr. Anderson?
Yeah, just to follow up on that, since there's a halftime reading interventionist already at Mount Daniel, and then proposal would be to cut that back and then add a full-time reading interventionist, what would be the net impact? So I know the position would be $104,000 about, but since we would be getting rid of that halftime position, presumably the net impact would be less than that.
It's, it's a, it's a good question. The net impact would be that reading intervention specialist position is being paid for out of one-time, part-time, hourly money. This would be a recurring full-time position, so the net impact would be the full-time position. Does that make sense?
Other questions or comments for?
Book a question.
Question number five was, were all of the presumptive commitments in the collective bargaining agreement included in the budget? And yes, all of them were accounted for in the FY25 budget.
So I have a follow-on question to this. The answer references items with a projected financial impact greater than $10,000. Makes sense. How many items are there with a financial impact less than $10,000, and what do they add up to?
There are a very small number of things that impact less than $10,000. The one that immediately comes to mind is a one-time payment to food service workers who did not receive a lunch in prior years. That estimated payment to those people is 1500 or 1200? I'm flaking.
I think it's 1500.
Thank you.
Because it was a fully loaded number.
Thank you, and there are six of those people. That, that is the, the significant item that was not detailed out. It's a one-time payment.
But it will be included in this, in the budget? Like, it will happen?
Yes, it will absolutely happen. The tentative agreement is that it will be paid at the first payment in July.
Any other questions or comments about this?
Number six was the VRS employer contribution rate. The change in the employer rate for the Virginia retirement system does not result in any type of a decreased benefit or a loss of benefit for staff. Okay, question number seven was regarding one-time funding. So the first is, you know, where does one-time funding come from? One-time funding comes typically from kind of two different pods. The first is when we have revenue that's higher than we budgeted, or expenditures that are less than we budgeted. So we have that savings available. So that's kind of one source of one-time money. The second is per our revenue sharing with the general government, when their revenue comes in in excess of what was budgeted, that additional revenue, we still receive our half of the revenue sharing agreement. So we receive that amount of one-time funding as well. And we typically get that, the fiscal year ends June 30th, and they typically tell us what that funding is later in the fall, so October, November timeframe. So those are the two kind of sources of money. This question response does reference the school board's policy on fund balance that talks about spending fund balance on capital projects that were approved but not funded in the capital improvement budget, looking at immediate one-time needs of a nonrecurring nature or other operational needs. So when we look at our one-time money in the past, the budget question does detail the largest portion of money that we've received in terms of one-time money was from the general government, that revenue sharing agreement. This last year, we received $920,500. And the year before that, it was $1,165,000 in one-time money. So two kind of large pots of money. The baseball field was an item that we hadn't included in our CIP. It had really been in our sights for a long period of time. It was considered a lot as we were looking at renovating the high school, but with the limited amount of money that we had and all of the needs inside the building, we hadn't funded it at that time. So when we look at use of one-time funding, our first goal is really to use one-time funding on a one-time expenditure, right? It's really important that funding doesn't recur, right? It's not best practice to use it on recurring expenditures. With that being said, during the pandemic, we did use one-time funding to fund some positions that were really critical in terms of our school system. So we had said when we funded those with one-time money that when recurring funding was available, we would transition those positions to recurring funding, and you really see that in this FY25 budget. Any questions on one-time funding?
Thank you. So can you help educate me on the difference between the things listed in the budget as one-time funding, and then the things that we might consider, that the previous iteration of this board considered last fall as one-time funding? And where the, whether those wish lists overlap? Like, I just don't understand how there seem to be two different lists, and they both go to one-time funding.
Sure. So when we look at developing the budget, one of the things that we really try to do is have that long-term look. So in these last couple of years since the pandemic, where we've been looking at spending that one-time money on things that are more recurring in nature, or as we've received budget requests from the school, and they're asking for things that truly are one-time in nature, we've incorporated them within the budget process, right? And we've done that using, I would say, just a moderate amount of money each year. But when we've gotten those large amounts of money from the general government at the end of the year, those last two years, that amount of money has been really significant. So at that point, we took that money, and we did come back to the board and say, with this large infusion of cash, right, we've developed these other recommended things that we would like the board to consider. So examples of that that the board approved, we used some of that funding for HVAC replacement at Mary Ellen Henderson. We used it to replace all the flooring within that building, which was just a great thing to get done. The baseball field fell in that category. So we've really kind of come back to the board for capital items as compared to putting those operational needs within the budget process.
I think, I think what you've said is exactly spot on. I would just add that the COVID money that we received from the federal government was really the first time that we got extra funding to do some things that we knew were going to create for us a funding cliff eventually, and we're at that funding cliff now, and there are some things that we want to continue as part of that funding cliff. Prior to COVID, we have a, we sort of have a working agreement and a working theory that we don't do anything out of one-time money that would, that would ever be recurring, because we don't want to put us, ourselves, or the board, or the system in a position where, you know, you've got a structural budget problem. So when we look at those things that are on the unfunded list, we, it's a lot of people in there when we look at the unfunded list. There are some things that are one-time money that we could pick off of that list and pay for, but in the end, the only thing that I recall specifically in this budget that we're going to use one-time money for that's not people, per se, is some, an infusion in materials and supplies at Jesse Thackeray. That's traditionally how we use those, those funds. We wouldn't want to ever do anything recurring.
So, one more follow-up. So do we have a wish list? Where do we maintain a wish list of those one-time funding things that aren't people?
Yeah, we, it's a, it's a great and legitimate question. The list of items that are at the back of the budget that you have are those items that have come up that we would love to be able to fund if we could, but made some decisions that we didn't feel like we should based on our current reality. There's not a, there's not really another list out there that we keep. There are things that occur. So for example, if our cooler breaks down at the high school, you know, in the cafeteria, we might use one-time money to repair that. It's kind of like a savings account if something bad happens, but those, those are the items that we see utilizing one-time funding for. And then we do get requests throughout the year from principals or from teachers asking for, I'd like to bring in a guest speaker, I'd like to do X, Y, or Z, can we, can we hire somebody to do that? And we'll oftentimes utilize one-time money that way. But we don't have a, we don't have a list of items that has been codified. The only list that we have are those things that are in here, and then our capital improvement plan.
Okay, so the list that's in here is almost entirely people, right, which most of it would be recurring. And I think I see a vehicle that was funded. I think it would be helpful if, as these requests come up, the big dollar requests, not the can I spend 100 bucks and bring somebody in, to keep a running list of that, so that we're aware over the course of a couple of years, just like this, it'd be helpful to see what folks are asking for, and what our, what our buildings and teachers need.
To go back to what you were saying about the pre-COVID and post-COVID times, are there still people being funded at one-time funding?
There are, I think it's three or four people that we have in the budget currently, three, I think. One is psychological services. Kristin, do you have that list in front of you?
I do, I had to pull it up. They're the items that were funded with the one-time pandemic funding from the general government, so as.
So it's not our local one-time money, it's pandemic money from the, from the government?
Correct, correct. And just as Dr. Noonan indicated, it was the pandemic, or the psychological services, it's an English-for-speakers-of-other languages teacher, and then we do have an advanced academic coordinator, the halftime advanced academic coordinator.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair Tice?
Just to make sure I'm clear, but if, if as presented, these, there wouldn't be any remaining one-time funded.
This is the last year of the pandemic funding. So next year, those three, well, the psych services in those two positions, the halftime advanced academic teacher, and the ESAL teacher will not be funded. That will be a decision then, next year, we'll look at to say, okay, is it important for us to put into the budget as, as a recurring cost, now that we've made it through the pandemic with those, those positions? And we traditionally, and I'll just share with the board, we traditionally go back to our unfunded, well, those things that are funded with one-time money, and then look at our unfunded list first. And we've been fortunate enough in the last several years to be able to get almost everything off the unfunded list from the prior year, the following year. So if, if in the conversation next year at this time, we're talking about, you know, you know, let's say I, I put in the advanced academic coordinator and the ESAL teacher into permanent position, then at that point, we, we decide, does it stay or doesn't it stay? Does that answer your question?
Okay.
Any questions or comments?
That ties really well into the next question, which is number eight, on unfunded priorities. So we said if additional funding becomes available, senior staff along with school-based leadership and operational leaders will meet to discuss all the priorities on the unfunded list.
Yeah, so I'd like to understand more about what happens, if that happens, right? So.
Sure.
What priorities are under consideration? How do you have that conversation? Who's in the room? Is it, you know, you guys and the principals all together? Are you going school by school? Like, how do you balance, because we've got four, five buildings?
Right.
How do you collectively seeing everything, balance that? And then what role and influence and input do the school-based leadership or teachers et cetera have?
So it's a good question. The budget cycle begins for us really in September. In September, October, November, we're collecting data from our principals and from our teachers about what they think are most important in our budget. We collect from each of the schools, their, their budget requests, how much money it would cost, and we have all of that information. And we have all of that information sort of going into the pot. We do everything we possibly can, given the scope of the strategic plan that we have and how it ties and looking at positions. And then we come up with those things that are on the unfunded list. We meet as a leadership team several times a month with principals, leader, principals, directors, our leadership team, and then with CTLs and with other curriculum leads that are here at central office. And we would utilize that time to go back and say, okay, you know, we have a little bit of extra money here. We have to make a recommendation to the board about how we'd like to spend this money. What do you see as some of the priorities? And we have that conversation typically in this room, there might be 40 people. We might do some sort of exercise where we do the dot exercise, we put everything up, what's most important. But typically, we'll go through, just through a strong, a strong conversation with each other about that to come up with, is this something we can all support? And does it help each of us individually? Because we do have the requests from each of the different schools. And when we get in the room and we have those conversations and we hear from each other sometimes, and it's interesting to watch, and you know, the dynamics of people, people will say, well, that's not as important as what you're talking about, so let me get behind that. And there's that negotiation that goes on. So that's a sort of in-the-room sort of look at, at the way it goes. And then, and then we cost it out. And if we have even more money, then we try to develop a priority order. And then we bring it to you guys, and you all ultimately will have the final authority.
Any other questions, comments? Ms. Michael?
And the last question, number nine, was on the EPD structure and the budget impact. So the EPD chart that's included in question three in the document takes the EPED values that we had in this current budget, and it does apply the COLA, the cost of living adjustment, of 3.5% to those EPEDs, right? And that COLA applies because if we're not continuing to adjust them, we fall behind the surrounding school divisions. The charts for FY25 are also modified by the three additional EPEDs that were included in the proposed budget. First was a web master stipend of $1,000 at each of the schools with the exclusion of JTP. There's a $2,500 EPED for the chemical support liaison at the high school, and then a $5,000 EPED, which is aligned with our curriculum team leader stipend amounts. And that is for the IB career-related program. So just for a little bit more information on the board on our EPED structure, when we did our compensation study with Siegel Consulting, they came in and picked comparator divisions to compare all of our salaries with. And for the EPED study, we did it in-house and we used the exact same comparator districts. So we got together school leaders from each of our schools, they were really integral to the process, along with members from our curriculum and instruction team. And we looked at all of our EPEDs and how they related to surrounding jurisdictions. So we looked at that external equity. Then we also looked at internal equity. You know, are we providing the same amount of staff, for example, coaches? When we look at girls' basketball versus boys' basketball? And then we looked at all of our EPEDs for equity at the different levels. So what are the expectations for a curriculum team leader at the secondary level as compared to the elementary level? So then all of that analysis was done. And then the principals went back to their schools and shared all of that information with the teachers in terms of the EPED changes that we made this last year.
So are these, are these levels the same if, because I understand that in some instances, you may hire a community member to fill one of these positions, like a coach? And are the, are the levels the same if you hire someone from the community? And also, how do you determine, is there a priority between hiring someone from the school first? Or, you know?
Excellent, excellent questions. So the EPD amounts are the same whether you're a current school system employee in another capacity, if you're not. And then when they're looking to fill these positions, they're really looking for who has the best expertise. So for example, if they're looking for a coach of a specific sport, they really want the person who can coach best.
But we really like people that are on our staff. And we, we're going to look at our staff first, and then we'll, then we'll go to the community after that.
Other questions, comments?
That's it.
Okay, well, appreciate the, the detailed discussions on each of these. And Ms. Kopp, Ms. Michael, really appreciate all the time. This is just one session of three that we're going to be going through. So we really appreciate all the time on the budget. And as always, for the public and also for the board, just to go through this level of transparency and the level of detail is very helpful for a very complicated budget. So thank you very much.
Yeah, all right.